Resent Bill 54 and its companion legislation and requested a public hearing by this body. The Chair noted in his response to our request that the US Justice Department had quite correctly filed a lawsuit against California over the three state statutes that unconstitutionally interfered with the federal government's authority over immigration. If the courts followed the law and the Constitution, Attorney General Jeff Sessions and the American people and the people of California will win that case. Sanctuary state sounds noble, but not when you were talking about providing a safe haven for dangerous criminals. In fiscal year 2017 alone, according to the Justice Department's own records and lawsuits, federal authorities apprehended more than 20,000 aliens in California. Roughly 14% of the aliens apprehended nationwide. How many of that number were criminal undocumented aliens convicted of murder, rape, burglary, and other crimes in California? Ninety percent. As Sessions said in his speech before the California Peace Officers Association on March 7th, quote, "California found these people dangerous enough to detain them in the first place, but then insisted on releasing them back into the community instead of allowing federal officers to remove them." This practice not only defies common sense, it's reckless. The California State Legislature Governor Brown and his appointed State Attorney General Javier Becerra apparently believe that it is better for law-abiding residents of California if criminal undocumented aliens who have been convicted of numerous crimes are returned to our local community. California's new statutes impose a number of requirements that, as the report of the State Legislature Judiciary Committee admits, are intended to frustrate an expected increase in federal immigration enforcement. Ladies and gentlemen, regardless of our views on legal versus illegal immigration, the decision before this body is one of public safety. It is really about our law enforcement being able to effectively fight criminals and force even other agencies to do the same in order to keep our neighborhoods safe. So far, eight California counties and 33 California cities have recognized that in order to protect all Californians, our neighborhoods can up the sanctuaries for cities. While Governor Brown and his appointed Attorney General and the Democrats in the California State Legislature have forgotten that the first job of government is to protect the people's lives and property, I am hopeful that the supervisors of Placer County have not. We are therefore asking that on May 22nd, 2018, this Board convene a public hearing to determine if it will join those eight counties and 33 cities and adopt a resolution opposing California's sanctuary state law and authorize the preparation and filing of an amicus writ in support of the United States versus the state of California. Thank you.
Yeah! Yeah! [applause]
The long, everybody claps and makes noises and do some time for a lot of it.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Raquel Alba and I live in Roseville. And this is the very first time that I felt compelled to come up and speak to the Board members. Mr. Duran, I have a couple of questions for you since I live in your district. Number one, what is your stance on the sanctuary state status?
We're not allowed to speak.
Oh, you can't comment back?
Just general.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, you can tell it's the worst time for it. So anyway, I won't ask any more questions. I'll just move on to statements. I would imagine that all of you up on the Board are familiar with the name Luis Bustamantez?
Yeah.
He's the individual that just recently was convicted of first degree murder, Sack County Sheriff and one of your own Placer County detectives. He had been deported twice out of this country and was here illegally again when he committed these murders. I cannot understand why this Board will not...I mean, if someone's here illegally, fine. Or if they're going through the process, fine. But if somebody is here illegally, I find it appalling that this Board won't even take it up for discussion to try to rectify that problem to keep not only police officers safe, but if this individual killed two cops, what would he do to the innocent citizens just walking down the streets? I find it appalling that he won't even address us. So I will say this, I'm gonna be watching for you to make some sort of public comment on this issue, because I know you're coming up for election. And should I see nothing, myself as well as many other people voting in your district will not be voting for you. And I want to say for the rest of you on here, I'm retired, I have plenty of time on my hands. When you come up for election, if I don't see some sort of public comment that you are gonna stand up against this sanctuary state stuff, I will be out pounding the canvas or the blacktop in your areas going door to door to tell people, vote for their opponent. They're not here for your safety. They're here for legal aid. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Olga Travizo. I'm a longtime Placer County resident, born here in Auburn. My family came to Placer County in 1946, starting with my father, Leonard Travizo Sr. He was a World War II Native American combat veteran whose regiment served 434 combat days in the South Pacific. My father is a proud member of the Tiwa tribe in West Texas. When he came home from war in 1946, he was racially profiled because of segregation and Jim Crow laws. He was harassed on the streets of his own town where his family owned a cotton farm. He came to Northern California because he remembered shipping out of California on his way to go fight the Japanese in the South Pacific and possibly die for this country, he and his four brothers. So when he came back and saw the racial profiling, the segregation, and the racism in West Texas and the nasty Jim Crow laws of those long time ago days that were very ugly, he came straight to Northern California. He came straight to Placer County. He bought land here. He worked for the railroad. He met my mother and he raised eight children. My father brought my family here because he wanted us to live in a country that would respect us, respect the color of our skin, respect our freedom. State of California has SB 54, California Values Act. SB 54 ensures that no state or local resources are diverted to fuel any attempt by the government, the federal government, to carry out mass deportations, and that our schools, our hospitals, and our courthouses are safe places for everyone in our community.
Legal.
A DACA student, Thomas Evangelista, could not be here, so I will read the statement on his behalf. SB 54 was drafted and passed into law in the state of California. That law is protecting immigrants that are not violent, that are not a danger to our security, that are going through the process of becoming legal residents, whose children attend our schools and were born in this country. The law is protecting immigrants that are not violent, not a danger to our security. Today, Thomas Evangelista and I, I'm sure that you will listen to public comments that will attempt to paint someone like him as a danger, as a violent criminal that needs to be deported. Immigration isn't so black and white. It's a complex issue. At the core of it is racial profiling. US American citizens born here in the United States, such as myself, I was born here in Auburn, have been racially profiled by ICE. I don't carry my birth certificate or my passport with me. If ICE continues to go unchecked in this county without uniforms, without warrants, in unmarked cars, taking people off the streets on their way to work as they have done here in Auburn just recently, this past month, myself, people who look like me, none of us in this room, I believe, have their passport on them or their US birth certificate. I am not a liar. So if ICE was to ever stop me, I have no way of proving on my person or in my car if I'm a US citizen. US American-born citizens have been detained and deported by ICE Immigration on quote-unquote "accident." I beg that you please use my property taxes to pay for local issues, local law enforcement. I don't want my property taxes to be spent doing the job of Jeff Sessions or ICE. That's what our federal taxes are for. Thank you so much for your job, doing your job.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am. Excuse me, would everybody please be courteous? Everybody has a right to speak. Please be courteous to the speaker. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm back again. My name is Paul Gallin, I'm from Rockland. We're back again, the second time, on Bend at Deep, as the citizens of Placer County asking our representatives to file a resolution and an amicus writ against the unlawful SB 54 and AB 450 sanctuary laws. The majority of you have rejected to even have an open discussion, let alone a resolution. The fiat reason you give us is to wait and see what happens with the federal lawsuit. That could take years working through the courts and cause countless people and our law enforcement to be put in an unnecessary jeopardy. Our message must be sent to Sacramento now. We need you to act now. The Board must put their politics, must not put their politics above the safety of our people, whether they're documented or undocumented. If you do not act on our behalf, then the people will use a remedy that is our duty to use when their politics, when our representatives refuse to abide by their oath of office following the Constitution of the United States. Silence in the face of evil is itself evil. We will hold you, we will not hold you guiltless. Not to speak is to speak. Not to act is to act. Thank you, and it's time to do the right thing. Thank you.
My name is Mike Murray. I'm from Rockland District 3. I come before you today not to talk about the merits of SB 54, but to talk about just simply asking you guys to do your job. And I ask this respectfully, just please do your job. Have a discussion about this. Have a conversation, have a vote about this. A few months back, State of Jefferson came before you and asked the same thing. And there was only a few people. They were brushed off. They were kind of big league to tell the truth. And now, take a look at the room. The room is absolutely packed. And this isn't gonna fizzle away. This is gonna stick. This room is gonna be packed every single time you're in here, with public comment being taken away from other issues to talk about this until you do your job and discuss this. As for voting public, we only have three options, really. Election. If you're up for election, you will be replaced if you don't do your job. Your job is to represent us and talk about the issues that need to be discussed. There's precedents for this in California right now. It's in your court now. Second thing, recall. I don't want to go into details on that. The third thing, and I can assure you this will happen every single time you sit in those chairs, is this room will be packed until this is discussed and voted on. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good morning, Ms. Murray.
Good morning. Kimberly Perret at the office of Congressman Tom McClintock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I stood before you, I believe, a month ago and presented you a letter from Congressman McClintock urging you to take this issue up. We stand here today, I'm representing him today, he's in Washington DC and wanted me to be here to speak to you about this issue, urging you to take this issue up and discuss it and pass a resolution in support of the citizens, of our district's public safety. A few years ago, as you know, we tragically lost two officers to an illegal immigrant who just recently got sentenced for those horrific crimes. So we urge you to stand by the Constitution and the rule of law and please take this issue up and discuss it on behalf of the constituents of the fourth district. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Jim Davis, Auburn. Mr. Chairman, I'm here today on my own behalf to request the Board of Supervisors hold a public hearing on the proposed resolution declaring Placer County a non-sanctuary jurisdiction. The voters in each district deserve to know if their supervisor intends to honor their oath of office to support the United States Constitution and ensure that our law enforcement has the ability to cooperate fully with federal authorities on immigration, despite the enactment of California laws SB 54, AB 450, and AB 103. California's sanctuary legislation is the product of the California Democratic Party's political agenda on immigration. Supervisors Duran and Montgomery, both Democrats, are compelled to follow this agenda. Mr. Holmes, you were a Republican. Respect for public safety, law enforcement, and the rule of law still matters. Or have you embraced the progressive ideology of the Democratic Party? Leadership isn't defined by standing with your finger in the wind. You can stand for the Constitution or you can stand with the Democrats. Mr. Chairman, be a leader and give the people a hearing. Thank you.
Yeah! Yeah! Good job.
Good morning. My name is Deborah Cohen and full disclosure, I'm an import from Nevada County. I am not a paid protester, I must say. I come before you to read the minutes of the Board of Supervisors meeting in Nevada County from December 12th. We were present there as well. The same motion was brought to the attention of the Board of Supervisors, Nevada County. I'm hearing a number of speakers here mention the issue of precedents, the rule of law. The counsel, Mr. Card, and I will address this to you and I will leave these minutes with you, the counsel, the legal advisor to the Board of Supervisors in Nevada County, stated, this is from the minutes. Chairman Weston responded to the questions from the public regarding consideration of the non-sanctuary county resolution. He reported that the opinion and recommendation of county counsel, COUNSEL, legal advisor to the Board of Supervisors, is that it is the county's responsibility to carry out state's mandates. Therefore, the Board will maintain the sanctuary position and this issue will not come forward on an agenda for support or non-support. SB 54, otherwise known as the California Values Act, is a state law. It was voted for by California's elected officials, signed by an elected governor. You, as you have often been reminded, are elected supervisors and up for election. This bill was signed into law by elected officials. You are elected officials held by law to uphold California state law. And I would like to remind you that if the non-sanctuary state speakers will be showing up in the future, should you be entertaining this motion officially on your agenda, which would technically be illegal, but if you decide to do that, we will also be here. We will also bring donuts. We'll be here in force. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Friends, I consider all of you my friends because you're Americans living in a land that was bought by the blood of patriots. My name's Calvin Card. I also am from Nevada County. I wanted to just let you know that the swamp of sewage of political endorsed crime is spreading. It's coming to Nevada County from Placer County. It's coming from the Bay Area and other places, from other places. The drug cartels continue to rampantly abuse the people, the citizens, and by detaining our local police, we are impairing the safety of the citizens. And no government, no government can exist in peace except where such laws of the Constitution are held and framed insecure that will protect and secure the rights of the citizens, especially under your jurisdiction. The citizens under your jurisdiction as a body called the Board of Supervisors have the ability, not to make law necessarily, but to make a resolution. And if not a resolution, become a plaintiff in the lawsuit against California to separate and become a new state called the State of Jefferson or something else. If you guys won't follow the law, we, the people, will have to help you to do that.
That's right.
So if you look at the history of Nevada County, when the Board of Supervisors neglected to protect and secure the rights of the individuals in Nevada County, there was a shooting in 2001 and cries at the funeral were heard because the county had a duty to secure the rights of the individuals, also those working under their jurisdiction, including the sheriff's office, the local jurisdictional police enforcement, and also to teach the correct principles by the way you vote. If you don't teach the correct principles, it's like Thomas Jefferson said, "If the nation expects to be ignorant and free in a civilized society, it expects what never was and what never will be." This is a principle above party, above popularity, and above pocketbook. We, the people, are no respecters of persons. We don't care what you own. We don't care what affiliations you have. We want you to vote for your oath of office and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Amen.
If you think your authority can just bypass this, I agree with some of those that have spoken that, you know, there are remedies to your employment. But I just wanted to share with you a book that was written back in 1966 called The Communist Attack on US Police, okay? By W. Cleon Skousen. I highly recommend that. Please do the right thing. Put it on your agenda. It's only a resolution.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're fast approaching the 30-minute limit, so you only have time for three more speakers. Mr. Mitchell, you'll be the last speaker.
It's not like so crowded. All three more speakers, man. So, 3:00 AM in the morning.
I don't know, I didn't, I wasn't, I was just...
They should've come to two minutes on this.
What's that?
They should've come to two minutes.
Oh, it's three minutes, huh? Yeah, three minutes is kind of long. Should be two minutes.
Because you get more people at the chair.
Yeah.
People upset.
Yeah, there's gonna be much people, they're not gonna be able to speak.
Or be the final speaker. Be the final speaker. Come. Come back.
He means wax.
You'll be the final speaker. No, no. And then you will be the final speaker.
Please not be very clear. I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
I'm gonna let these other people speak, but you'll be the last one.
Okay, so our bills have a voice.
You will be able to speak, but I want you to...
Thank you very much.
Okay, so be back where you were standing.
Travis, a lot, sorry.
Let's proceed. Next governor, yeah, next governor, Travis Allen.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Travis Allen. I am the State Assemblyman representing the 72nd District of California. That's all a part of 13 cities in Orange County. I'm also ready to be your next governor of the state of California.
There we go, Travis Allen for governor.
...against Jerry Brown's illegal sanctuary state policy, also known as SB 54 and the related laws. You may have heard that the small town of Los Alamitos in my district was the first town to opt out of this illegal sanctuary state. It was followed on by many other cities across Orange County, Huntington Beach, Fountain Valley, Westminster. The list goes on and on. Then the county of Orange opted out, then the county of San Diego opted out. Even the sheriff of Orange County and the sheriff of Contra Costa County are now posting the release dates of criminals, so ICE knows when the release dates will be of criminals who are here illegally, so that they can pick them up, so that they never enter our communities. Ladies and gentlemen, this movement has caught fire around the state of California for one very simple reason. The sanctuary state policy of Jerry Brown, Kevin DeLeone, and the California Democrats have endangered every single Californian. I will tell you about a very simple story. It's a story of a young girl walking down the pier with her father. Her name was Kate Steinle. Her only crime was taking a walk with her dad in San Francisco. She was shot in the back by someone who had been deported five times previously, who was a seven-time felon, who was released just months earlier by the sheriff of San Francisco due to the sanctuary state and sanctuary city policies of Gavin Newsom and the California Democrats. Kate Steinle died. She would still be alive today if it were not for this illegal, unconstitutional, and dangerous law. This law was never voted on by the people of California. It is against the US Constitution. We are not talking about someone's grandmother sitting on a couch. What we're talking about is someone who's come to our state illegally.
What about the dreams of Kate Steinle?
They have now committed crimes once they're here, and they are now being sheltered with our taxpayer dollars. It is illegal. It is dangerous. Californians do not want this policy. They've done many polls, and I can tell you, you don't even need a poll, you can just walk down the street and you can ask any person of any ethnicity, anywhere in the state, rich or poor, it doesn't matter, man or woman, and ask them, "Do you truly believe that people who have come to our state illegally that have committed crimes should be sheltered with our taxpayer dollars?" The answer is not just a no, it's a resounding no. I would ask you to hold your hearing that you're looking to hold on May 22nd, to join the federal lawsuit against this illegal sanctuary state. This is where change happens. I can tell you, I serve in Sacramento. Until I'm your next governor, it does not look like Jerry Brown wants to back down from this policy. I did call out on National Media for Donald Trump and Jeff Sessions to come to California and sue California, and they are now suing California. I ask you to join that lawsuit. I gather over 25,000 Californians across the state, including here in Placer County, who want to opt out of this illegal sanctuary state. I ask you to join with them. I ask you to uphold federal constitutional law, and I ask you to protect the people of Placer County by rejecting and opting out and opposing the illegal sanctuary state. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Amen. Yeah! [applause]
Good morning. My name is Jeffrey Eric. I'm a constituent. I've lived in California my entire life. This SB 54 bill is just disgusting. What I find going on is the lack of accountability. No one's doing their job. We need to protect our citizens. Our blue lives matter. Our citizens' lives matter. I consider my children dreamers. I don't understand why someone who's an illegal alien who comes into our country is considered a dreamer. I feel like anybody in the world is a dreamer, but we don't have to exclude the group of people who are here in the United States following the law, doing what we're supposed to do, okay? I have a problem with the fact that my children are gonna go to public school that's gonna be overwhelmed by people who don't speak English. We need to focus on our children, we need to focus on our veterans, our homeless. I mean, I heard someone speaking about homelessness up there in Auburn. You guys have a problem with homelessness. What do you think leads to homelessness? Do you think bringing in a bunch of illegal aliens that don't speak English is gonna help that problem? I don't think so. I think that a lot of sexual crimes come along with that, drugs come along with that, crime comes along with that. So we need to pay attention to what your constituents are saying. Again, I'm here with these people, I've got nothing else to do. I'm gonna stand up and fight because there's nothing more important than me and my children's future. I will sit down and find out who each and every one of you are, where you guys are at, how you vote, and I will bring that to the attention of all of your constituents. Again, my goal is to make America great again, and that starts in my city, my county, my state. That's what I'm gonna do. I'm not gonna stand here idling and allow for people to spread propaganda on the corner of your Rep. Ann Douglas every week. I'm not gonna allow this to go on in my streets anymore. And all I ask is that these supervisors, your district people, do your jobs, you follow the Constitution, you follow the oath that you guys took. I don't care who you voted for, follow the law. That's all I ask, people. We can be held accountable, why can't you?
That's right.
There's no reason why you should be allowed to stand here and hold us accountable, but you're not. So that's why I'm here voicing my opinion with my fellow patriots. And we're gonna be here at every single meeting, speaking for the entire three minutes that were allotted. We're gonna wait in line like we're supposed to and not cut. We're gonna do what we're supposed to do because we follow the rules and we act accordingly.
Law and order.
So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate you guys. Travis Allen, 2018, for governor.
Yeah! That's right. Amen.
Chairman, Supervisors? My name is Jerry Mitchell. I live in Rockland. And now I'm in the process of pretty high-end politicians here. I've lived in Rockland for 37 years, I've sent to the community, and I'm a lover of the Constitution. And as you know, there's been an article, Article 6, calls to make this a legal plan. No matter what these people say, premises, governors of the state of California, their ability to write laws, countermands...
We can go sit here, but we can talk to Travis Allen right now, okay?
...to take a state of the jurisdiction and report the comments of Mr. Rabel, Mr. Brooke, and Mr. Allen, whom I've never met before, and consider moving ahead with the opportunity of, and establish a policy for the state of California. Lots of publicity for the short concert, but no power. Thank you, Jerry.
Hello, my name is Mitchell White, I'm from Roseville, and I'm running for U.S. Congress, 4th District of California. My first question I have is, do you lock the doors to your home? I'm saying this because I am not saying that you are locked the doors.
You're locking the doors, what?
It just means that you know that you're not, and that they're the right reasons.
It is talking about people who came in illegally, committed crimes once they're here. It's a very different issue. They're illegal immigrants. So these are the people that actually will come here and they're putting crimes once they're here. This is like the person who killed Kate Steinle in San Francisco. That person had been deported five times, so it was seven times illegal. This person was not somebody that should we have in this country. So this is why these crimes are happening, because of these sanctuary policies of Jerry Brown and California Democrats. This is not changing all immigrants with a broad brush. We're talking about people who are illegally that have made crimes once they're here. And that's why you see all of these people are so opposed to this policy because everybody wants to live in a safe neighborhood, everybody wants a safe state regardless of where they're going.
When you look at SB 54, it's not changing immigration, how ICE does its job here.
Actually, yes it does.
Because what it's doing is it prevents local law enforcement agencies from assisting.
Well, yes.
It's not changing how ICE operates here.
Actually, that does change ICE. That absolutely changes how ICE operates.
It's not having everybody's right to come here and do their job. It's not preventing what it's doing, what it's doing is saying state law enforcement authorities, you focus on what you do. You focus on what you do. It's separating them two.
That's actually incorrect, Steve. This hampers ICE. Look, very simply, we don't allow our local law enforcement to coordinate with the federal immigration authorities. We are tying the hands of our local law enforcement, we are tying the hands.
Does it change immigration enforcement?
But no, actually, it does change enforcement, the legal immigration laws. Because now we're making it more difficult for ICE and federal immigration authorities to do their work. And it gets worse. You take Javier Becerra, the criminal attorney general of California. He has now threatened to prosecute any California business owner that assists federal immigration authorities doing their constitutional duty. So look, this is a very clear agenda on the part of Jerry Brown and the California Democrats and Javier Becerra to stop the federal immigration authorities from keeping us safe in California. This is not just about illegal immigration. This is about apprehending people who have come here illegally that are criminals and allowing federal immigration authorities to do their jobs. Everybody wants to live in a safe community, regardless of whether you're a first-generation California or a tenth-generation California. Everybody deserves the right to live in a safe state. This law is our constitution.
Regardless of whether this country is safe, we oppose SB 54, we support the federal government. It is legal. And the U.S. Constitution, local authorities still have a criminalized state law. It hasn't changed. The legal laws are running here in the state, I mean, in the county.
As Placer County is discussing today, we're talking about joining the federal lawsuit. So that may have to wait until that federal lawsuit is actually successful. And you remember...
What's your like in Orange County? Or in Orange County, correct?
Yes.
What is the other state in Orange County doing at this time? Are they still holding state law by combining SB 54?
So, Orange County is actually taking it on three separate fronts. Starting in my district, the town of Los Alamos is a charter city. So it has opted out of the illegal sanctuary state. It is no longer following SB 54. They take a look at the county of Orange, they have joined the federal lawsuit, which Placer County is talking about here right now. And then the sheriff of Orange County, Sandra Hutchins, now is posting the release date of his criminals. So ICE is looking to release any of those criminals, find out who's here illegally, and apprehend them before they ever get into our communities. So they're fighting it on all three fronts. Today in Placer County, we are urging Placer to join the federal lawsuit. But I will tell you, this movement across the state of California to follow federal immigration law to reverse the illegal sanctuary state is catching fire across the state. That's why I'm here in Placer County today to support the good people of Placer County, to say that, look, you have a right to the U.S. Constitution and to the protection of the U.S. Constitution. Immigration is a federal issue. We are going to ensure it's a federal issue and we will not tie our local law enforcement's hands from cooperating with federal immigration authorities to keep us safe for people who have come here illegally that are committing crimes once they're here.
So would you support a bill that modifies it that specifically points to criminals, to criminals only, and not migrant families, immigration families, or those on the street?
Well, actually, that's exactly what SB 54 does, which is why I am trying to reverse SB 54. As the next governor of the state of California, I already vowed in my first 100 days in office to reverse the illegal sanctuary state laws by calling a special election and reversing those laws.
As for something that would protect immigrant families, illegal immigrant families of course, the state, and not those who used to come here illegally then commit crimes, because you've said that several times, then commit crimes. So are you willing to then oppose something that would protect...
What is the guy talking about?
Listen, it's very clear, as the next governor of the state of California, I will ensure that California follows federal immigration law.
Thank you.
It is clear in the Constitution that immigration is a federal power. This is not a state issue, this is a federal issue.
That's right.
As the next governor of the state of California, I will ensure that California follows federal immigration law.
Yeah.
Thanks, guys.
Good job, Travis.
Thanks for being here. You bet. That's your Friday. Yeah, hey, listen, guys, you know, this is very clear. We have a law, it's enforced. Yeah, you can. I love that shirt, thank you.
Thank you.
Can we hit a picture?
I got it, Jerry. Get in there with them, we'll get them real quick. Real quick, get them real quick.
Yeah, I did. Thanks, guys. Let's go, Travis. Look, you didn't make this picture, will you send that to me?
Oh, we're live.
We don't have it now.
Hey, guys, can we go outside and do it out there so we don't...
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thanks, guys. Keep the fight up. Keep the fight up. Remember I went downstairs for the beer and I didn't get mine? I didn't get a shirt, I didn't get nothing.
Thank you, Jeff. Appreciate it.
You can jump in? Jump in, man. Guys, jump in real quick. You still get one outside?
No, she's going to send it right now. What's your, uh, where's Kathy?
Take a picture and give it to us, okay?
Yeah.
You want me to take what you do?
Yeah. When I get in with them.
Can you load it, man?
Yeah.
I'm still live right now.
Okay.
Jump in there, man.
I'm glad to be here for you guys.
Get in there. Are you going to get in this? Get in there, Chris, get in there.
Yes, exactly.
Get in there, get in there.
I need one of you boys to get a picture.
I got a picture with the future governor. Absolutely. Thank you very much. You are a savior. Let's do it.
Let's do it, got this.
We're all lining.
This is my town.
Go ahead.
Thank you.
One more, Travis, one more, sir.
Yeah, here we go. All right, I got like one more picture, I got to go, guys.
Oh, no.
Let me get your number because I'm on a...
Thank you so much. Nice, thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you, Travis.
I love it, there's going to be more. I'm going to do another one. I love your shirt. I want you there again. Thank you for the service, Mr....
Thank you, sir.
I'm going to send that now so I can get what you're wearing.
Would you mind taking a quick... That's me and Proud Boys. Okay, Proud Boys, Proud Boys, come on over. Hey. John, everybody, let's go. We're going to do a PP one.
Hurry up, guys, I'll get it too.
Yeah, Proud Boys right here.
Every mile now.
Let's do the thumbs up.
It's okay, we'll just do that.
We got Proud Boys right here.
Let's get one more, okay, good. We got it.
Good job.
Good job. It's blocking right now, huh? It's blocking right now.
I didn't know he was cool with the cowboys.
That's pretty cool, though. Travis Allen with the Proud Boys. Hey, what's up, Joseph? Hi, Lorraine, hi, Michael. Yeah, so Travis Allen. Made it to the meeting here in Auburn.
There he is, yeah, we made it.
Against SB 54.
Come on, spread the word. We're going to be at your rallies. We're always going to be there. By the way, I'll tell you what, just watch Facebook, there's another rally coming up, okay?
Yeah, we're coming tomorrow.
All right.
All right. Later, Travis. See you later, Travis. God bless you.
Let's go, man. Sorry for crossing the room, how you doing?
We're with a bunch of working well...
You didn't know it was me, huh? You were looking kind of weird.
I was looking at the chick to the right of you and laughing. I was like, oh, I know him. The one that was right by you. She's one of the protests down in Roseville for Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Oh, yeah? That's her?
Yeah, she was one right there.
The chick was right next to me, right?
Yeah, she was the one in the gray shirt, sweatshirt, and next to you.
You're going to pick, right?
She's older than badass.
Yeah, I guess, yeah. I mean, it depends on your reference, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Older than me.
I'm a schoolteacher, which I have to get there.
What's up, man? Good, good, good. Good, man. You guys going to plan to come out there later?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, we're going out wearing flag, bro.
People are cutting in front of you.
All right, same with them, I'm trying to make it out there. Are you going to get out? Oh, yeah. Right now? Sweet, sweet. We're going to head straight over there.
For the flag?
Yeah, flag, we're heading Roseville. We're going straight over there right now.
You guys going to skip the vote then, you guys going to go right now?
Jeffrey, yeah, we're going to go.
All right, guys, so we're going to cut out right now, we're going to be back on in a little bit, okay? All right, thank you for watching. God bless America.
We're going to go over there in support of Tom McClintock.